Good afternoon. It is 6 o'clock. This is a meeting of the planning and zoning commission. Today is November the 24th of 2019. The first order that we have is the, uh, roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
President.
Jose Tevez.
President.
Carlos Flores.
George Bickelheimer.
President.
Raul Valde.
Johnny Narvai.
President.
Abraham Lugo.
Jose Luis Vialle.
President.
Jorge Amigas.
President.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, you do have form.
Do you have anybody who, uh, asked to be excused?
No, I do not.
I do have Mr. Abi Lugo, who did email me. He's, uh, leave out of business. Make a motion. Make a motion to excuse Mr. Lugo. Second. A motion in the second. Others in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Can everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and every entity and its friends.
The next item that we have is the, uh, consideration of your approval of minutes of October the 30th. Give you all a few seconds to look through that. Entertain a motion.
A move that we approve the minutes of October 30th, 2019?
Second.
A motion in the second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. First item that we have is a public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning lot 29, block 2, Plaza, Southgate, Unit 2, uh, Southgate 2, Unit 1, located at 3003 Sabina Plaza Court from R1 to R2. The, uh, there was 47 letters sent out. I don't know if there's any update?
There's an update. We received three against, Mr. Chairman.
Three against? All right. And, uh, the staff does not support the proposed zone change. They propose use of multifamily. Uh, all right? This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? All right? What are the wishes of the commission? I'm sorry, is there somebody? Yes, ma'am. Step up.
Your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Mari Elizabeth Garcia.
Yes, ma'am.
I live on 3009 Sabina Plaza, which is about maybe four houses down or up because the street is up. Um, I've lived in that house for 35 years. It's a fairly quiet area, although it's getting more and more traffic all the time. And, uh, we like it that way. You know, it's, it's, it's a nice area. You know, now we're starting to get access to more restaurants and all that stuff. That's relevant. Uh, we really would prefer that it does not become a lot of family. Two blocks away on, um, Loas del Sur, they're actually building a large complex of apartments already. So I don't think we need more apartments. You know, it would be better to just have another, uh, single-family unit.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else who wishes to speak against the zone change?
I'm Gloria Meraz.
Yes.
I'm a retired educator. I have lived in, uh, in, on Sabina Plaza for 35 years. I, I am about four or five houses up where, um, the considered, uh, building is supposed to be. I am against it because I'm gonna reiterate what Ms. Garcia said. Our, uh, it's a one-block street and it's very quiet and very little traffic and we like to keep it that way. Uh, the person that's trying to build apartments, do you happen to know how many apartments?
No, ma'am, I do not. It's a multifamily R2, so it'd be duplex or what are they looking at?
They didn't provide any information regarding them.
No information is given? There's no information given?
Because I own apartments and it is 100% on the go. Because I always considered my neighbors. Because people walk in and they tell you one thing and it happens to be another. So they're there today and gone tomorrow. And my neighbors will stay there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change?
Good evening. I'm, uh, Manuel Sanchez. I also live on Sabina Plaza. Uh, uh, we've been there since 1984. It's always been single residence. We'd like to keep it that way. Uh, the streets really aren't wide enough for a lot of traffic. If you get, if you got cars parked on both sides of the street, you're pretty well, pretty well messed up. You, the traffic doesn't move as quickly as possible. My, one of my problems is, all right, all right, they wanna do, they wanna do multifamily. But there's no description. You know, is it two, four, six, 18? I mean, it's, it's a single lot. Theoretically, they could go three stories high. That would pretty well, pretty well kill the neighborhood. Uh, as it, as it is, uh, property values in South Laredo are pretty well, uh, don't compare to anything on the north. You can have the nicest, you can have a really nice house in South Laredo for a lot less than you'd pay in Del Mar or any of the, uh, the northern neighborhoods. So let's keep it single-family as, for as long as possible. That's it.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else who wishes to speak against the zone change? Isn't it three? I'm sorry? Isn't it a three-person limit?
Is there a three-person limit?
Oh, ma'am, come on, go ahead. We'll, we'll entertain your comment.
Hello, my name is Margaret Montsevai Sanchez. I am Manuel Sanchez's spouse. We live two properties down from the, uh, property that is being considered. Uh, we've been living there for 35 years and as all my neighbors have said, uh, we have been living there, uh, in, uh, in an extremely quiet neighborhood. It's been slow in growth. Uh, finally, it, for the past maybe 10, 15 years, we've seen more houses going up. And, uh, those of us that have been living there for the longest have been used to the extremely quiet, uh, neighborhood, but we've had to adjust to, uh, higher traffic. It is a very small, uh, as, as was mentioned, it's a one-street cul-de-sac. And, uh, uh, obviously, many of our homes have multiple vehicles where we don't all accommodate our, our vehicles in our covered parking. It used to be required covered parking. It's no longer that way, but, uh, most of us don't, uh, have enough space to put our vehicles in, um, in, in, in the driveways and, uh, which makes our streets a lot narrower, narrower. If we were to see a multi-residential building, I can't fathom in that little tiny space that's available for that property where parking could possibly be accommodated. I could foresee that being a problem where even though it is city parking or it's not our own personal, many of these people that would have to live there would have to, uh, park in other areas, not necessarily in front of their, of their area. Um, I think it would devalue our properties and, um, we also have families that live further up the cul-de-sac that were not called or inquired. And I realize that there was like a 200 feet or yard or forgot what the, what the radius was. But since we are a cul-de-sac, it does, uh, make us all, uh, part of the problem or benefit, whichever way you'd like to see it. Because it is a street where everybody, the ingress and egress of that area is all the same, even if it's people that are up in the higher part of the corner, uh, who were not, uh, notified. Had they, I think we would have more representation here. Anyway, um, really would like for you to consider the ordinance. We did purchase our properties knowing well it was single resident and, uh, we would like to keep it that way. And, um, we love our neighbor who is possibly look, looking into this, um, but, uh, we're really disappointed that that would be the plan that, uh, would be brought up to the zoning commission. So we implore that you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Anybody else who, uh, wants to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? All right? What are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing and support staff recommendation to deny the zone change.
A motion in the second. All those in favor? Aye. Those against? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by authorizing a conditional use permit for amusement redemption machine establishment at Lot 9, Block 9, Country Club Commercial Subdivision located at 4302 East Saunders Suite D. The, um...
Mr. Chairman, there's...
How many? There was 14 property...
There's an update. The applicant requested to table this item.
All right. Can I have a motion to table? Something moved? Motion? In the second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion tabled. Next item is amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 10.01 acres out of 26.61 acres. Uh, has the track Portion 34, JAD, has that track 7652 located east of 400 Road from AG to R1A. And the staff, uh, supports the proposed zone change. The, uh, proposed use is residential.
We have an update also, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
We received two letters in favor.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? Okay. What are the wishes of the commission?
Move that we close public hearing and support staff in recommending approval of the zone change.
A motion. We have a second. Second. And a second. All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning lot 73, 74, 75, Block 2, North Creek Subdivision located at 5400 McPherson Road from B1 to B3. The proposed use is, uh, restaurant where they drive through and we had 15 notices sent out. Is there any updates?
Yes. We received one in favor, four opposed.
One and four, all right? And the staff's recommendation is, uh, to support the proposed zone change. This is a public hearing. I do have some people who, uh, have signed up, I believe, for this item. Um, I'm going to first entertain the comments, uh, in favor of this. And I have, uh, Adam, is it Karizi? I'm sorry. Karachi, I'm sorry.
Do you have handouts for the commission?
Sure. Come on up. Hand it out.
And staff as well. And then if I can use the overhead projector, I can project to the room so everybody can see it.
Well, good evening. Thank you for, uh, speaking with us.
Your name for the record, please.
Yes. Adam Karachi with Raisin Canes and the property development manager for this part of Texas. Um, are you all familiar with Raisin Canes?
Sure.
Yep. Um, so we are, uh, planning our first restaurant in Laredo at the corner of Hillside and McPherson. Um, we, I, I will spare you most of the history since you guys are familiar with it, but I just wanted to give a few, uh, points real quick. So we were founded by Todd Graves about 23 years ago in Baton Rouge. Um, we are privately held company. Um, our restaurants are all properly run. We, uh, have area managers that give back to the community and are involved actively in the community, so we would be bringing them out to Laredo as well. We serve one thing, our one love, chicken fingers, fries, toast, coleslaw. So, um, we do that well and we do that through a high-quality building, high-quality site design, high-quality landscaping. We have six areas of focus that we give back to the community with. Education, feeding the hungry, pet welfare, supporting your shelters, um, active lifestyles that'd be like supporting, uh, bike keys or things like that. Business development and entrepreneurship and pretty much anything else that the community comes to us with could be entertained. So we do one thing, that's we serve our one love, that's our chicken finger meal, and we do it well. These are just a few examples in the packet of our current architecture and what you could expect at this restaurant. So with that being said, I'd like to speak about the site geometry for a minute. As you're all aware, this site is a existing vacant lot. It's actually four lots and we'll talk about the plot later, but the existing three lots, 73, 74, 75, um, were zoned B1, which does not allow a drive-through use. So instead of changing the site layout and bypassing the process, and we chose to do it the right way, and that is rezone the entire property, um, so that it's all consistent. So the corner lot where we're proposing the building, we've put the building as close to the intersection to be away from the residents as possible. Um, in doing that, we've also had to put some of our drive-through onto the lots that do not allow it under the B1 zoning. But we've also designed our circulation to stack about 20 cars and those will be away from the residential area. We have found that 20 cars is more than enough in, in Texas to stack during peak hours. And we also get people through the drive-through in under two and a half minutes from the time they order. So you don't have to worry about those cars stacking out into the road or back into the, uh, the bank and against the residential area. Um, we also met with staff early on in the process and they indicated that there is an existing drainage problem there. So our civil engineer, Huntley Lewis, he's here this evening. If anybody has any questions for him. Um, he's been looking at the site, he's been working very hard on it. We actually are gonna eliminate those parking stalls to the north adjacent to the residential. We're gonna erect an eight-foot-tall brick fence as the, um, I think the ordinance only requires a six-foot fence. Um, so it's gonna be a brick fence to screen the residential. And we're actually gonna put in landscaping and eliminate those parking spaces and improve the drainage so that the lot behind us is, um, not flooding. So we actually were able to survey, find out that there's an existing drainage system there right now. This is clogged up, so it's not performing the way it's supposed to be. So we plan on improving this corner. We're gonna bring you a stellar-looking building, new top-quality materials. We don't cut any corners, so you're getting real stucco, real brick. Um, I mean, this is gonna be a nice building. You're gonna have outdoor seating, um, so it's, it's gonna be a great place for your community and we're excited for it to be, uh, to be coming to Laredo.
Great. Thank you. Great. Anybody have any questions from the commission?
Oh, the building you're proposing to put, or the lot that you're proposing to put the building on, it's already a B3 though, right?
Yes. Yes, that's correct. The building is in the, in the B3 zoning. I think they both allow the restaurant, it's just the B1 doesn't allow a drive-through.
But the B1 is the one, is the area where you're proposing to put all the, basically the parking lot area?
Correct. But I believe parking lots are allowed in B1. It's just not the drive-through use. And as, as I said, we are gonna eliminate this parking right here and screen the residential
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, we do have, uh, let's see, Huntley Lewis? Come on in if you wanna go ahead and add anything to this or speak in favor of it.
Hi, my name is Huntley Lewis from McKinley Horn. I'm a civil engineer. Uh, Raisin Canes is our client. We work with them all over the state. They're an excellent, uh, community partner. I'm here to answer any drainage questions or any other engineering questions that may come up, either from you or from anyone speaking otherwise on the project. Do you have any questions for me?
No, I'm sure you've done your homework on the property. You know that there's a high water table in the area, so you've already done that.
Yeah, we're gonna be improving the condition as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor, in favor of the zone change? In favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change?
Buenas noches. My name is Patricia Skinka. I live on the 321 South Dakota, that's where they're standing, they're trying to set up a restaurant. Our, um, my question is this. We've been living here for more than 20 years in this locality and it's been very pacific with the colony. And now that they're gonna set up a restaurant, we don't have any fear, but it's just the sounds, the noise, the persistence of, uh, the, uh, the food. They're gonna put the garbage behind the property, because logically, as we're seeing right now, that they put it on the map, the restaurant will be in front. And where are they gonna put the location, where are they gonna put the garbage? Well, they're gonna be in the residence, the houses. For example, I have a house with a garden, which is my father, who's 25 years old, outside, and we heard the noise of the restaurant that's, uh, uh, before, uh, the restaurant that's nearby. And I heard the noise until 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning. So we don't know the time of this restaurant, that it's gonna be until what time? Well, my father says, "Why are you moving?" It's a lot of noise. So there's gonna be a lot of traffic and, uh, there's a lot of cars that they like, they take cars, uh, beautiful, they put a lot of gasoline, they're loud. So, uh, in reality, I wouldn't like it. But, uh, of course, it's something that you guys are the ones that decide, right? It's yes or no. But, uh, above all, uh, it's, uh, it's been very good right now, the colony, not too much noise. And with this restaurant, uh, that they're gonna, uh, there's a lot of things that are against the residents. For example, I live on the 321. My sister Ramirez, she lives on the 319. Miss Cawas, she lives on the 323. And, uh, uh, this month, they're gonna be, uh, we're the ones that live in the back of, uh, where the bank complex is. And, uh, 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 the man, uh, the lady, uh, are the ones that are the most affected of residents that live here, that are gonna be behind this restaurant. So, uh, we want them to consider, right? In case you guys live in that area, uh, they'd like to be in a place where it's very quiet and, uh, there's not so much traffic, uh, uh, the smell, uh, uh, I don't know if my father can explain, but, uh, the last word is yours, right? Those who approve, but, uh, if we could, uh, if we could consider, uh, consider us, right? Especially, uh, uh, in that area, there are adults, seniors, guys, like my father, who's 25 years old, and they'd like to be outside in the patio, quiet, uh, and, uh, not hear so much noise. If it's just, uh, uh, the hillside, it's so noisy, uh, uh, to be more attached to the hillside, uh, uh, the houses, uh, it's gonna be a bit more complicated.
Okay. Muchas gracias. Anybody else who wishes to speak against?
Yes, hi, my name is Sylvia Cawas. And I don't, it's, I just have, uh, something to say. I live at 323 and at the end of the, like, I think those three last little squares, that's my backyard. But, uh, there, when it rains, it gets really clogged up, the water. And the only thing is, I'm thinking is, there's like, there's supposed to be a drainage there that runs under the parking lot. And we already called the city of Laredo because, say, yeah, another hour and there's a lot of mosquitoes, when it does. I mean, now, and I was just wondering if, are they, will they, will they be aware that that big drainage, that pipe is under the parking lot? For them to do something about it? Because that water has to, from my backyard, has to go and drain on hillside, uh, you know, before getting to Springfield, there's something there. So I'm, I've been trying, we've called the city, they don't do anything about it because they went and checked and it says that it's deep under the parking lot. So I don't know if that's an issue for them?
Well, they're gonna address the drainage in that whole area. Yes, ma'am. They are gonna address the drainage and make sure that area doesn't flood. They're, they're aware that there are some drainage issues in the area. So their engineer, if I, I heard him correctly, is looking into how to minimize any, any drainage, uh, concerns.
And I don't know, those three little squares, are there all gonna be parking? I couldn't hear really well.
The...
I understand that the corner will be the, the place and those three squares, like, um...
Yes. Yeah, they, they, they're gonna be the parking, but that's where they're going to mess with the drainage to...
Yeah.
To deal with the issue that you're talking about.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak against his own change?
Buenas tardes. My name is Sandra Tamés. I have a question, uh, that I would like to clarify. Uh, I'm not in favor, not in contra, but, uh, it, uh, all depends on how much it affects my house. Because, uh, I'm in the lot, uh, in the 325, and, uh, then I have a neighbor, Maya. Uh, there, uh, cars pass when they enter the bank, uh, uh, the automatic cash register or the bank, uh, simply, right? The drive-through. But, uh, it's very important for me to know if this location, uh, the food, uh, are they gonna go exactly through the bank? Because if it's like, uh, then, uh, they would be in disagreement. Why? Because my house, I'll repeat, has Maya. Then, uh, with the bank, uh, there's no problem, because first, uh, it's the bank, right? Then, uh, it closes at 5:00, 6:00 in the morning, perfect. But if it's gonna be until midnight, then, uh, all the cars that are gonna pass through that street, uh, that's my question. And then, uh, I would like to explain, because I don't, uh, I don't understand. I don't know if, uh, because I'm just seeing, uh, on the map that you guys sent, uh, they're all in the lots together. Then, uh, I don't see the street, despite that, uh, when they put, uh, uh, the announcement that they're gonna pass, uh, I see the street, uh, the bank. Or, uh, the bank, uh, they're not gonna close it.
No.
Correct?
Let me get the engineer...
Then, uh, they're gonna use the location.
I mean, uh, but... Uh, what I understand is, uh, the street, uh, the street, uh, the bank, uh, uh, can be used, but it's not necessarily the only exit. Uh, they're proposing two exits, one for McPherson, one for... Hillside. Hillside. But, uh, uh, McPherson is just for going to the south. So it's supposed, uh, if they're gonna go to the north through McPherson, uh, they're gonna have to go through Hillside or through the public street that's behind, uh, that you...
Uh, that's the public street, that's where I'm referring. Then, uh, I feel like it's gonna affect me, because, uh, uh, there's gonna be a lot of people that are gonna go through there. Then, uh, I repeat, uh, my neighbor is Maya and, uh, uh, it's, uh, it's a, uh, a part that's quite long. Then, uh, I feel like, uh, it's annoying. I mean, uh, I don't know, uh, if they're gonna go through there, it's okay, but then, uh, it's gonna affect me in that aspect. I don't know if these three lots here are B1, that's what you're saying? This is gonna be left with, uh, as a location?
Yes.
Then, uh, the food is gonna be in the B3. Then, uh, definitely, uh, if it's in the B, uh, if, uh, the B3 had been a location, uh, it might not, uh, uh, affect me that much, because they're gonna directly through McPherson or through Hillside. But here, uh, these three, uh, I, uh, I feel like that's, uh, I'm not, uh, uh, in agreement.
Commissioner, that's three minutes.
I'm not in agreement, because they're gonna go through my house.
Okay. Muchas gracias.
Thanks to you for listening.
Okay.
If we could, uh, save the questions, there may be additional ones that other, other commenters have, and then we can bring up the civil engineer after all the, uh, after all the, those that are speaking against.
The thing is, I think some of the comments, the, the proponents answered, but I, I think that they may not have understood the...
Yeah, the proponents probably don't understand what the complaints were right now either. Right. We may need to... Did you all speak Spanish?
It's Tamil.
So that's why I was trying to translate for them. So, that's why I was trying to translate for them. But they had... The proponents had mentioned the two comments, the two of the questions. So, it was just...
Was that about the fencing? About the concern?
There's one more?
Yes.
The item for this program was a small change. And we're at two points to the construction design. And I think that should be answered on the process, on the code, and the file for our building. I think that we should move on the zoning, whether we are doing it or not. Just a perspective comment.
Thank you. Any other... Anybody else who has anything different? Anything different to tell us than the people that already spoke against? Anything different? Yes, sir?
My name is Jaime Ramirez. And I reside in 319, South Dakota. I purchased that property back in 1981. I've lived there for thirty-eight years. A very peaceful neighborhood. A tranquil neighborhood. You can walk in the evening and just tranquilly all over. My concern is that this proposal to change the zoning to be three, on those three lots to the west, is a concern. That is right behind my property. And on this business proposal, my concern is the traffic, for one. The noise of the traffic. The foul odor of the food. And most of all, I feel that the gift of tranquility on the purchase of my property years back, I think, in my opinion, will be distorted. I hope the council considers, you know, our comments. And make a good judgment decision on it.
Thank you very much for your property. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? What's anything different to offer? All right. Nobody else has anything else? Nobody else wishes to speak against the item? All right? What are the wishes of the commission?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm ready for staff. So, if the rest front physically sits within a B3, and everything else is just drive-through place, B1. Is it even required to have a zone change?
The challenge here is that they are, as they would need to, they're... They have to replat so that it is one lot. So that they can have the drive-through that extends onto the other lot. That's not something you could do with separate lots. They're also having to take care of some easements and some other things that require them to replat. So, in the replating process, they're making these multiple lots into one. And so, by doing that, they need to make sure that the part of the lot, that the lot is all the same zone. That would allow them to have the use that they're requesting used for that lot.
Okay. And so, some of the three issues that came up, that I think are salient, is garbage pickup and, you know, sometimes it's 5:00 AM. I don't know. But the point is, the wall that they're offering, I don't think they understood that, to make it a bigger wall. And then, the northbound street, that's an interior street where the bank is. Is there something about that, that they have an opportunity to address and make adjustments to?
That's something we could talk about in the plating. When that item comes up. Danny McGee, our traffic engineer, is here and going to speak to some of the concerns that staff had with how the site is gonna be accessed and how traffic will circulate in and out of this site. But... Yes, Commissioner?
No, go ahead.
But, I think it's appropriate here to look at whether or not this use is appropriate. And then, on the plating phase, we can then talk about how the traffic is gonna flow and whether or not it'll create an issue.
It's really, of course, to allay to a degree the fears of the individuals who are opposed to it. Because it's unclear how it's going to be developed. Like, the flooding issue, that they're gonna actually address that. That's a nice benefit for that area. I'm just... That's my point, that they can... So, they don't think, "Oh, what a disaster. We've been ignored." And they're gonna do whatever they want to. Well, no, there's a conscientious development, it sounds like, that's going on here.
And then, there's, what? There's a wall that has gotta be constructed to. Well, the thing is, though, there is some concerns by the citizens, because the wall is only on one lot, not on the second one. The 323, which is the one that abuts the property, that's where the wall's coming in, on the south. But the one that... The resident that came in on the next lot over, her lot, abuts Compass Bank. And that one, they have no control over that side. And so, she has a legitimate concern.
Well, Joey, I thought it was gonna be an L-shaped thing.
Yes, but the thing is, the wall is right here. This house is the maybe that was saying.
Oh, it's a traffic issue.
So, they don't have control over the north-south wall. They only have control over the east-west wall.
Right.
So, they're gonna fix... They're gonna help one landowner, but they're not gonna do anything for the next-door neighbor. And so, you have two different neighbors. And one may get a benefit of the solid brick wall and the drainage removal problem removed. The other one, she still has a legitimate concern over her fence.
Right, okay.
All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to close public hearing, support staff's recommendation, and approve the zone change.
Second.
A motion and a second. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item. Letting the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 1.1 acres out of 1.34 acres of Portion 14, Abstract 36, located at the north of FM 1472 and west of Verde Boulevard from AG to M1. The proposed use is light manufacturing. And there was two letters sent out. Is that correct?
No update, Mr. Chairman.
No updates?
Zero, zero.
All right, and the staff supports the proposed zone change? All right, this is a public hearing. Those who wish to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change? Those that wish to speak in favor of the zone change? Those that wish to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
I move that we close public hearing and support staff's recommendation to approve the zone change. Second.
A motion and a second. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are those against? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item that we have is public hearing permitting the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 2.06 acres out of 5.10 acres. Track Portion 10. Tomas Sanchez, Original Abstract 280, located south of FM 1472, from AG to M1? Is it the same one, or what?
It's a different one, but it's the same title.
All right. Again, it's light manufacturing, what is proposed. Two letters sent out. Any updates?
No updates, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and the staff does not support this particular zone change. Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishes to speak in favor? In favor?
Eduardo Gutierrez, with Premier Engineering, for the record. I'm here to speak in favor of the zone change. We feel that the area is mainly light manufacturing, which is warehousing, trucking. That is the intended use. We think that it doesn't change the surrounding uses. It reinforces it. It makes sense to have something like that there. And so, we're in favor.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners, from the engineer? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor? In favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? All right. What are the wishes of the...
One quick question for staff. Mr. Steinman. So, this is different from the other, because there's no adjacent M1. Okay. But, I don't know if it's north-south, but on the...
South.
Where all those trailers are? That's B1? I mean, what is trailer parking supposed to be?
Well, it's all in the ag zone. And that... What you're seeing on the aerial may or may not be permitted in the ag zone. There are some, you know, some uses that may look like light industrial, that they're just parking equipment in it.
It looks like it to me.
This is a challenging call, because there are two things that we use as staff to determine whether a zone change is appropriate, where our recommendations are coming from. Actually, there's multiple, there's many things. But two weigh heavily on our mind. And one is the character of the existing area. You know, what the existing zoning is. And then, what's the plan for the future? And here is basically an area that is mostly undeveloped. And the plan for the future for this is not for industrial. Whereas, this landowners requesting to turn it into industrial, that will then start to have an impact of... So, right now, you have an opportunity to say, hey, the comp plan says, the plan for the future is this. Do we allow that plan to unfold, or do we start changing it now? Because if you start adding industrial uses now, then you make it very difficult for the plan to be followed out.
Right. And what does the comp plan say?
Is neighborhood mixed use, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right. And then, it'll be adjacent to medium-density residential behind it.
1472's long gone to that, isn't it?
On that area, yes.
But is this something... I don't know the exact address, and I didn't drive it. But isn't it something... Doesn't it seem unrealistic? We're gonna put homes on 1472, which could turn into a freeway on Porch to Plains?
Well, for those commissioners that grew up in Laredo many years ago, you might have said the same thing about some places now that are residential.
Like where?
Sorry.
Where?
Well, you might be able to...
Okay.
Things, you know, over decades... I mean, obviously, yes, this is very far away from the center of most...
No, but 1472 itself, this chain of events was put in play. I don't know when it started, when the mother started converting, whoever was first. But I don't know exactly where this is on the map. Is this...
The properties to the south are in the...
South of Benitas? Or what?
It is immediately past FM 3338. So, on the turnoff to Benitas, it is just right past it.
A little bit past it.
A little bit past it.
There's no homes on there, Mr. Steinman?
No new homes going there.
Yeah.
There's no houses.
That's hard. That's where the Char Ruthinger Road's gonna pop. And that's industrial superstar area.
Well, the expertise of the commission is very important. And, you know, you have to... You help us with that determination. But as staff, we looked at what... We give weight to what the future plan is and what the existing conditions are, which currently are undeveloped. So, if you feel like you have more information on where this will go, then what we'll need to do definitely is correct our future plans for the future. Because now that we're starting to approve industrial, if that's your intent tonight, then that is gonna severely limit the future possibility of what the comp plan suggests. And that's medium-density residential and neighborhood retail, neighborhood mixed-use center in the future.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, what's your opinion about that? I mean, I'm familiar, somewhat familiar with the area. And it's blowing up with industrial use.
Well, the biggest challenge up there, obviously, is your transportation.
Yeah.
You know, 1472 is a challenge.
Five minutes, Mr. Chairman.
And a lot of the areas is... Got a lot of... Really, the development in 1472 has been mostly warehousing on the north side and some on the south side. And continues to grow. Now, Benitas is the only subdivision way up there that was subdivided into housing. But, the comp plan had talked about trying to keep the M1s on the north side of 1472. Not... And on this area, not necessarily on what the side that empties into the river.
What the city has always done, and tried to do as much as possible from years ago, is keep all the M1s to the north of FM 1472 and put residential to the south. Okay? And now that, unfortunately, there's been battles there that have been lost. Okay? But that has been ongoing since, I remember, 1991, when I was there as the director. So, yeah, that's more or less what we planned out years ago.
I was gonna quickly mention, Mr. Chairman, that the trend for that area, it's pointing to a manufacturing M1. I mean, I don't think that's gonna be reversed. What we see on the map is pretty much pointing to the M1. So, what we do with it? We withhold... This person is trying to actually legitimize that lot by asking for an M1. That's what I see there.
Okay, let me continue with the public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak against? Against? All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
Move that we close the public hearing and not support staff's recommendation to... How do you say this?
I'll say it.
Go. And approve.
Go against staff's recommendation and recommend approval of the zone change.
We have a motion and a second. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Those against?
Aye.
One against. Motion carries. All right, the next item that we have is item 7A. This is a review and consideration of Manada's development master plan. The intent is residential and commercial. This is a 17.5-acre site. It is located east of McPherson Road and north of Shiloh Drive. The zoning for this ten-lot development is B3. And the proposed action is approved, subject to the following comments from planning, from engineering, and a notice of development. The engineer of record is Guerra Engineering. I don't see Mr. Guerra here. Okay? So, what are the wishes of the commission?
We'll treat them, subject to the following comments.
A motion, we have a second. And a second. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item that we have is item 7B, which we do have some communications from the engineer to table. Not only item 7B, but I'm gonna do them simultaneously. 8E and 8F.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table 7B, 8E, and 8F.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
And a second. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. So, the next item that we have is item 8A. Preliminary consideration of Lomas del Sur subdivision park dedication plat. The intent is a park. It's a 3.25-acre track. It's located east of Bejido Avenue and north of Lomas del Sur Boulevard. The proposed action is approved, subject to the following comments from planning, from environmental, and a notice of development. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Frank Estrada was sheriff engineering, and we concur with staff comments.
Thank you. Questions to the commission?
A motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
And a second. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 8B is preliminary... Item 8B. Preliminary consideration of the replat of Lot 1, Block 2, Rosio Commercial at Alexander Subdivision, Unit 1, into Lot 1A and 1B. Block 2, Rosio Commercial at Alexander Subdivision, Unit 1. The intent is commercial. And the proposed action is approved, subject to the following comments from planning, comments from planning, from engineering, from water and utilities, and a notice of development. The engineer of record is Howland. Yes, sir?
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is, for the record, Miguel Jimenez. I'm here on behalf of Howland, representing our client. We agree with the comments by staff. The only one I would like to bring up is the utilities, water and utilities. It's asking for a water and sanitary sewer master plan for the development. There is pretty much no, no master plan. We, we don't, we don't see a need for, for a master utility since one of the lots is going to be, one of the comments is to make the smaller lot uninhabitable. The existing services would just pretty much be relocated for the, for the lot that is buildable. So there's not really any construction of, of utility lines. That's the only.
Yeah. Most of the utilities are already built up in that area, is that correct? That's on Fenwick?
Yes.
And, uh, Bartlett?
Yes.
Yeah. It's a little sliver that's there. It's kind of a pie shape or it's a sliver of land that's right there. Okay. All right. Any questions for the engineer, for the commission?
Well, I have one. So the significance of that is that it's an unnecessary cost or it's just unnecessary period because it's going to remain like a natural, you know, un, uh, don't tell me exactly why, why is this?
Well, basically, he's bringing in one lot. I mean, the other one is uninhabitable. So it's a one lot plat.
So this would be like a waste of time or money?
Well, it's, it's money.
Okay.
You know, to do a master plan for one lot is...
Okay. Thank you.
You know, doesn't make any sense.
And nothing would be constructed, so we'd just use the existing, pretty much, infrastructure, utility infrastructure, so.
Okay. Number two, the plan needs to show projected flows and demands is, is unnecessary also, Mr. Chairman? There's three, there's three items there. And the, and the last would be the seal, which would go on the master plan, so that's not necessary, because you're saying let's not do a master plan.
Yeah. You're talking about the flows?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the, the thing about that is we're basically removing, since one is going to be unbuildable, we're removing areas, so if anything, there's going to be less, less use per se.
Okay. But, Mr. Chairman, then that can be struck, all of the utilities comments?
I, I think all three comments can be. I mean, you're, you're taking basically two acres and part of the two acres is, one of them, I don't know how big that lot is, is it unbuildable? I didn't...
Yes. It's point two, point two acres. It will be unbuildable.
Okay. So you have a portion of two acres that are unbuildable. And it just leaves a portion of, of land that, a small, small portion now. We do, you have no problem, no, no problem with the comments from traffic, with the shared access and all that kind of stuff?
No, sir.
All right. Makes sense.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay? All right. Wishes to the commission?
I move that we approve...
Yes, sir?
For the record, Danny McGee, City Traffic Director. I'm not sure why this is being done. I'm kind of perplexed as to the intent of this plat. The only, I guess, thing I could see happening is that this property being sold to the person that were kind of obviously monitored to gain access to the street from the back property. That's something we would be adverse to if we only had one property. The driveway is one thing, but when if we end up with two properties to use it to gain access, that would be something different. I don't know if that's the intent or not.
I have no idea.
So I would say if it's unbuildable, then we put that there's no access granted to that lot. And it was, I'm, I'm kind of perplexed why it's even being separated out, but if it's for intent to be unbuildable, then you don't need a driveway to it.
I mean, the only reason I, I was assuming that they were trying to separate it out is if I wanted to buy that piece of property, I'm paying for extra land that I can't do anything with anyway, so I mean...
And that's fine, like I said, but as long as we have a note saying that there will be no access given to or from, it's a very, very high volume area and we already have our problems with congestion out there. We don't need more driveways.
What you're saying is that there should be no through traffic from...
From that lot's little sliver.
I guess, that, that lot is, uh, the north buds the funeral home. Is that correct? Funeral home or the one next to it?
That's right.
It does, but the funeral home. So you're talking about traffic coming off of the funeral home or what?
Well, I'm just trying to make sure that if that's being said it's going to be unbuildable, that we keep it that way and not use it to, that somebody comes later on and asks for a driveway for that.
He's basically saying that they don't backdoor sell it to the funeral home, so they, the funeral home uses it as a second entry point. But I think the issue here is who owns the property. Let's see here. It says Joe Jackson Funeral Home is the applicant. So they own the property. Okay? The funeral home owns the property. All right? So...
That might be why they're going. Because if the intent is just separate it out and tax wise, I, I have no idea, but if they're separating it out to be uninhabitable, that's fine, but listen, make sure we have...
Well, let's get the engineer up here. What is, let me get you up here. What is the intent?
Well, at the moment, we really don't know the intent of our client. He, it is, it is filled, if, if we come up, if we show the plat, it is filled with, with all sorts of easements, so it's really unusual, that little piece of, piece of, of that lot. Now, it, it is also, the, the remaining lot, it is also, the, the majority of it is under the floodplain, so he, it's really like a small area where they're going to be able to build something. So whether, what, what I'm thinking of, our client, if he wants to sell that lot, you know, maybe the area, the area he's going to sell is going to affect the client. Maybe it's easier for him to sell that lot, you know, if, if he gets rid of that corner piece where that's filled, I mean, it's going to be, it's unbuildable. There, there's nothing, the little area that's not, that there's no easement running through, it's in the floodplain.
Well, in plus the dimensions of, I mean, from what I'm looking at here, it's, it's a, it's like a triangle type.
Yes.
A lot and it's, it's tiny. I'm familiar with that curve. I drive that road constantly and I'm familiar with that little sliver there. Um, yeah, it would definitely be an unbuildable property now. I can understand, uh, I'm still trying to process your concern on traffic going through.
Like I said, I don't know the topography of Atlanta's sub or not, but you can see where they put that one lot line between the two.
No.
It lines up perfectly with the, the property south of it.
Are you, I guess, are you thinking that people are going to start using that as a shortcut? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, shortcut, or they'll come in and then they'll add that to the property in the other one and then say, okay, now I want an access point to University. All I'm saying, all I'm saying is if, if they're saying it's unbuildable and they're separating it out for whatever reason, let's put stipulation, so I don't have to look at it later on for driveway. If that's the whole purpose, let's not put a driveway on there.
Well, right now, one of your comments was that there's only, what, one driveway? Is that correct?
Sorry?
You must share a driveway access. That's one of your comments.
Yes, but since, and like I said, I didn't hear it, they said it's going to be unbuildable and they're not going to do anything. I, I was concerned that they were going to do something with the property.
Well, if it's an unbuildable property...
Right.
There's no way they can ask you for a driveway.
Right. So that, why would you separate a piece of property out except if you're going to do something else with it?
That's a good point. You bring up a good point.
That's why I'm perplexed why this is even being done.
So you're, you're, and I guess I'm going to defer here to Kirby. What's your thought on that, Kirby?
On the plat, it, one of the notes, the replat notes is that all curb cuts shall comply with transportation element of the city rail comprehensive plan. I, if there are concerns with, with the, that they're going to sell this to the property owner to the south and...
They are the property owner. Well, they are, they are the owners.
So to, to do that, to do, let's say, that's what the intent was, to do a replat with the lot to the south that they could gain access to university. In order to do that, they're going to have to come through this process of replating those two so that they can gain access to university through this little piece they're creating. In that process, transportation would be able to, at that point, provide comments to say, now, that may or may not be their intent, I don't know, but if that is their intent to gain access to university with, with block, with Lot 4, Block 2 to the south, then they're going to have to go through the plating process to combine those two in order to get access. At that point, then those concerns for traffic could be addressed and they, it sounds like traffic would not be, would not be amenable to adding access to university for, for that as a lot. So in other words, I, I can't see why they would be doing this, but it's within their ability to do it and it doesn't stop us from putting restrictions on traffic in the future if, if that's what their intent is.
I guess all I'm asking for, if I may, is, is just either have them go back and say that's the intention or not, and if, if all they're doing is separating it out to be unbuildable, then let's put that note. If, if, if there's no intention to build or have a driveway, then they shouldn't care that you have that note.
What, let me ask you this. Uh, let me get the engineer. What are, what are the dimensions of that unbuildable lot? I, I...
It's a quarter acre.
I don't know. In terms of, what are the dimensions of the lot? Give me the issues.
Let me, let me put it up. Is it, is it a...
Same document. I think the other one's bigger than you. The lot dimension, so the, the line on the south, that, that one is 364 feet. And then, okay. So we have the line table here.
So L8 is 76 and a half feet.
Correct.
That.
Yes. 76. And then L7 is eight feet. L4 is six feet. L3 is... I, I make it up. Yeah, L3 is five and then for this lot. So it'd be L7, L4, and L8.
Point two acres.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay. Other wishes to the commission?
I mean, it, it, I don't want to waste anybody's time, but they should just clarify better and then, so traffic's concerns are, are satisfied? Or is it just, is it our, it's not our role to, since the concern's been brought up, that we say, why don't we just satisfy the concern before we approve it? Or we just wait to see?
Well, make, this is a preliminary plat. They can still shake it out. I mean, we can make a motion to approve, subject to the following comments, adding traffic, what is it? Traffic, traffic note, changing traffic note one, saying must share access driveway to saying only lot. What is that lot number, the big one?
1B.
1B, having, the only one having access. Because that's what he's asking for. Mr. McGee's asking for... I know what he's asking for. He's asking for that lot not to have any, be granted any access, but, you know, I mean, it, I, I, I may, I may disagree with Mr. McGee on that. I mean, the only access point you're going to get from there could be funeral home traffic. That's what it's for. I mean, that's, that's what it seems like it's for, but... I mean, I don't see where it's going to generate, you know, large volumes other than a certain, you know, time of the, of the day. I, I don't see that, no.
Can I field a question?
Yes.
Kirby? So since this is a preliminary plat, can, would Mr. McGee's issue be addressed at that point if it does become that issue or for more information presented, would it be addressed at that time even though we don't go forth with a comment or not?
Your question is if they're trying to combine this with another lot to the south in order to gain access or make that a more lucrative lot because it has access to university? To do that, they'd have to go through a plating process, you know, they, they, so they'd have to make that intention clear through a plating process in order to, to get that, to gain that access.
Well, here's the deal. If he plats it into two lots and he sells one of the lots because the applicant is the owner of the property, okay? And he keeps that unbuildable lot, then he already owns that lot. Yep. So he can just punch right through.
Yep.
Because he's selling the other lot. Okay? And actually... It's not like he needs to come back and do anything after that. That's what Dan's... That, that's his concern, because... That's what he's, he's, you know, and I'm more, well, I mean, how much generations are you going to get through there? I mean, coming off of funeral home. I don't think that funeral home's going to want people using that as a shortcut and they're, they'll probably end up doing something like, you know, roping it off or closing it off. They're probably going to open it up because the note says use shared access, so you're giving him access through that sliver to the back. And that funeral home's problem has always been that their exit and entrance point through Jackman is, is always congested. Yeah. It's a choke point. It's a choke point there. For the funeral home, it's more convenient for them to empty out into university than the Jackman. Sure, you give it a in and out from two different areas and it minimizes the problem that you have on Jackman. I don't know if you've, you looked at that, or, I'm sure you have looked at all options, but, uh... I mean, I, I don't see, to be honest with you, a, a problem with them having an, an out going north. I, I really don't. Or an in.
If I can just say one thing...
Surely, come on in.
I was very perplexed when I saw this plat. So I'm saying, why are they doing this? The only way I can figure out is they're trying to do what I think they're trying to do. So they need to, to me state, if that's their intention, then we can do a traffic study and they can wind the road, they can do, the access can be allowed, but we need to work it out the way they're, they're trying to, not some, hopefully, it's not, it's not some backdoor way of trying to get what they want, but hopefully it's, we can work it out if that's the intention. If that's not the intention, to separate a piece of property that's unbuildable, then let's just do it such, no access and we move on. But why, why, why put it so that we have to look, go look at it again if that's not their intention?
Mr. McGee, though, I, I guess that my question is because of how bad Jackman is at most peak periods, like from five to seven, Jackman is, is craziness.
The reason I'm concerned about this, the reason you said...
And, and university isn't that troubled. I travel there every morning.
It's becoming that, right now, Rosio Drive is just real close to this.
Yes.
Probably going to have a traffic signal anytime soon. Either that or a four-way stop and it's going to back up the queue into that. We don't have the left turn lanes for someone to turn into that if they use it for the funeral procession or something like that. I don't know. That's what I'm saying. There's too many unknowns.
Okay. Well, at this point, we're at preliminary.
Right.
So we still have time for you to hash these things out. Okay?
Right.
Because I see that, you know, I don't really see a problem right now if it's hashed out correctly. You know, I don't see a problem for that funeral home exiting north at all. I just think it's a, it's a common sense thing, truthfully. It takes traffic off of Jackman. It's a common sense thing. I can see your concerns if, if you're going to, but at this point, I know you just started and I'm sure eventually you're going to be taking traffic counts and stuff because you did mention you want to come up with four-way stops and to do that, obviously, you need traffic counts to be able to justify your, your signals. So at this point, we're not there yet, but I, it's preliminary and I think a lot of this can still be hashed out.
All right.
Okay?
No problem.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Just a quick comment, Mr. Chairman. Some of the areas in, in the area of Laredo, they're unbuildable, but we use them as parks. We use them as parking lots. I think the description of it being unbuildable, it's erecting a, a, a structure. That's what they meant. But if they, if they want to use it as, as, whatever they want to use it, see, I mean...
I mean, it could be a parking lot.
It's their choice.
It could become a parking lot.
So I would, I would approve the, the preliminary.
Okay. So... I guess, just to finish my motion, just made a motion to approve, subject to the following comments. Okay. What about, what engineers concerned about the water? Oh, I'm sorry, we're striking, what, what were those? We, they got, I'm sorry, got so lost with the traffic. Oh, utilities. Utilities.
The utilities. Striking utilities, no, water and utilities, one, two, and three.
Okay. So then that's your motion to approve, subject to...
Just motion to approve, subject to the following comments with them working out the traffic stuff that...
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries, thank you.
Gentlemen, I have to go, but I would wish all of you all...
Two, three, four, five.
You have to go. Wish all of you guys, ladies and gentlemen, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you. All right. Okay. Next item that we have is item, um, 18. All right, this preliminary consideration of replata lot 73, 74, and 75, block two, North Creek subdivision. The proposed action is approved, subject to the following comments from planning, engineering, water and utilities, and traffic safety. Yes, sir, the engineer of record is Kim Lee and Horn. You wanna come up? Are you, are you, uh, in concurrent with the comments?
Yes.
Once you've gone?
Hello, gentlemen. So, uh, as discussed before, for the raising canes, we're combining the three lots with the one lot on the corner. Staff had a few comments, um, which we've coordinated with Danny about. We are fine with all the comments except for the one on traffic about no access to or from McPherson. We think that was a typo simply because...
I don't think so.
Well, as soon as it's currently plotted, it's, it's right in home lane from McPherson.
It's what?
As currently plotted, it's right in home lane from McPherson.
Well, then that's what I was gonna say. I mean, on, on your exit there, if you could, you know, design it where forces are right. I think the concern there is if people are trying to get out, making a left turn there, it's a traffic conflict.
Yes, sir.
So if you could design that exit, uh, force a right...
There was a median traffic feature on the, on the earlier map.
We've, uh, we've been coordinating with Danny about, um...
Right in, right out.
Somebody's...
Correct, so we're gonna make this a right in, right out. And we even talked about doing, uh, we call it a port chop here, but something that forces this right-only movement.
Yeah.
And then, um, to discuss, in our discussions with Danny, we're going to construct as part of our site development, a median, which would...
Okay, well, if you're gonna do a median, then that becomes irrelevant because there will be no left turn movement. So if you're gonna do the median there, then that, that resolves the right in, right out.
No, that's, you don't need to talk about that anymore.
You don't need to, so that's why the, okay, well, I guess then the tra, Dan, would you come up, please? I mean, I guess your comment there is no access from McPherson would be, become a knot? And, I mean, if they're gonna do a median there, that, that eliminates your concern.
Danny McGee for record, City Traffic Engineer. Our comment was submitted, even though we had this drawing, I still denied giving them access because it was kind of a one-size-fits-all median. You don't do that, you have to engineer it. But after talking to, uh, Mr. Duffer, uh, with Kim Lee Horn, right? She's with Kim Lee Horn?
Yes.
Okay. They, they agreed that it was just for display purposes, you know, that they're gonna engineer it and, and, and so I agreed that we can try and work something out.
Okay.
Okay. Unfortunately, when it comes to medians, there's a lot of, uh, public coordination has gotta be done, so just because we wanna do it doesn't mean it's gonna work out. So we have to look at that.
No, I agree, based on your space and your limitations, I agree. So then you would be okay with, uh, striking the no access from McPherson?
Yes.
Okay.
Subject to working out the median.
Yeah, this is a preliminary anyway, okay?
Yes.
All right. Okay, what are the wishes to the commission?
That we approve item 18C, but, but strike the traffic safety, um, comment number one that says no access to from McPherson, but with the stipulation that they're gonna work out a median design.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, and the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. The next item is, uh, preliminary consideration of the plat of Manadas Development Phase Two, the intent is residential. Uh, the proposed action is approved, subject to the following comments from planning, uh, from engineering, and from environmental. And a notice to the developer. Get our engineering, it's not here, so what are the wishes to the commission?
I'm, I'm moved that we approve item 18D with the attached comments.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries. The next item that we have is item nine, A. This is the final consideration of the plat 11 of La Valle subdivision, phase seven, intent is residential, and the proposed action is approval. Can I have a motion to that effect?
Um, so I'm moved...
A motion and a second?
One quick comment, Mr. Chairman. It's now the Rodrigo Rodriguez, last Corporal Rodrigo Rodriguez Road, if they can fix that or, I don't know when that gets fixed, but it's no longer called Cuatro Vientos.
Well, there's a portion, pardon me? A portion of that Cuatro Vientos that got renamed, right?
Three fifty-nine to Magana High.
That's a whole thing, yeah. Okay, it's already, the sign's already up.
I know.
Yeah, the sign's already up.
That's why I'm just wanting to make you that clarification.
It's already been done. Yeah, okay, good, good point. Uh, second on the motion?
Second.
A second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item that we have is consideration of the model subdivision rule, compliance for the plat of Village South subdivision, phase two, intent is residential, and the proposed action is approval.
Motion to approve?
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item that we have is the, uh, regarding the revision of the Laredo Land Development Code, section 2478.2, letter E. They require, to require the paving of all dead storage parking lots in accordance with the specifications and standards set forth, ordinance number ninety dash zero dash one oh seven, and then the other matter incident there, two. Kirby, can you go ahead and, or who's gonna shed some light on what they wanna do here?
Yes, one of our staff from the building department.
Okay.
Good evening. Roland Lozano for the record, Building Department. We brought this item up for, as a revision to the land development code, uh, as per city council's directive. So basically, um, dead storage, they're allowed to have caliche on the paving and not the use, it's just how to pave. And commercial parking lots, you have to pave either asphalt or concrete. And so the only thing that's being changed, and how it's being changed, is exactly how you do commercial, so making commercial parking lots and dead storage to be paved same way. Right now, the ordinance had allowed, uh, up to five years to pave. And so basically, taking the time limitations off of those that, you know, and staff is recommending within a year of any existing dead storages to comply with a new paving and any new ones that come in must pave. That's, uh, but we're, we're asking the, you know, to come up and obviously asking this commission to give a recommendation on this, so if you have any questions.
So the proposed changes, and if I heard you correctly, is, okay, it used to be you had five years where you had to do increments within five years, okay? You had to do twenty percent increments every year for five years to comply. Now, what you're saying is that you're gonna have a one-year window to allow people to comply right now, or is that window being closed?
Well, if you read, actually, I think that was an interpretation, but if you actually read, and let me put this up here, see if I can get this.
To answer your question, we'll, we will give current, those that are currently a year to come into compliance. All new will be required to do so immediately.
Sure, that's, that's just one, I wanted clarity on that.
Right.
Let me ask you a question then, how many businesses are out of compliance?
That's a good question. I, it would be more enforcement, I don't, I wouldn't have that number.
Well, how did you, I know the city council mandated this, but I, it would seem to me that you would do a little bit of research, find out how many businesses we're talking about. I mean, isn't that just common sense to see how, what the impact's gonna be?
Well, in, in fairness to the building department, I would say that they're, they're, it's, well, if you wanna speak to that directly.
My name is Edgar Orosco from the building department. We already started the list and currently we counted around sixty trucking companies, warehouses, losing unpaved parking lot, but claiming to be dead storage.
Okay, well, that's sixty's significant.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, can I, can you just define what dead storage is?
Okay, so dead storage is a defined use for, you have to park a, a vehicle or something for a minimum of thirty days in there without moving, not in and out, versus something
Yeah, for a day or...
Every day, in and out, so...
Dead storage is a thirty-day minimum length of sta, length of...
Parking.
This is to prevent people who are saying we're dead storage, but they're actually in and out.
Correct. And, and a lot of it, well, it was brought up at city council, the, the dust and nuisance and so...
And the one year is, according to what's written here, is stuff that abuts residential, but even if you're out in the boonies, the five years is the max.
Right.
And, used to be.
Used to.
They're proposing now, any business that is existing and is not in compliance has one year to come into compliance, okay?
Oh, I see, I see.
The five-year rule is gonna be done away with, it was done in nineteen ninety, I believe, but...
Well, I thought that, that, that pact during, or with caliche top or something like that, I thought that was allowable. That's no longer allowable, or it hasn't been for years?
Right, this, they, actually, the ordinance, there, there's an ordinance that said, yeah, after, they, the ones that were existing had five years. But see, it kept saying we've been existing and...
No, but even with this, this concoction of soil and caliche or whatever, whatever the mix is, that's, that's no longer gonna be acceptable?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
So it's only gonna be either asphalt and not the millings, but the hot mix, uh, like the street or concrete.
How, what about mixing, uh, caliche with concrete? That's a very durable surface, too.
Well, there's not, is there a specification that, well, this, only this is allowed?
Well, that's why I'm saying, you know, I mean, there is, there's, you know, that's an option, too.
Right, uh, again, this, this came from, the way it was, it was directed, and actually, it was, it was actually, Mr. DeNares, if I'm not mistaken, at city council spoke to, city council says, why don't we take this to, to the, you know, people and, and ask? And they're like, no, it needs to be, uh...
Let me ask you this, and that, 'cause refresh my memory a little bit. In the standard spec book, how is paving defined? 'Cause I don't remember right off, and I don't know if changes have been made to the spec book.
You can, you can pave it as, as asphalt, not millings, and you can pave it as, as concrete, as the new two thousand thirteen specification manual came out. In industrial, it's eleven inches of concrete, uh, commercial parking lots, it's eight, I believe, and then inside residential, it's, you know...
Eleven inches of concrete for a parking lot?
That can't be correct.
For industrial use, for industrial use parking, that's correct.
One of the...
In the land...
You'll go broke before you even get started.
That's the fiction, that's the...
That's the base, that includes the mix in concrete.
Yeah.
That includes, eleven inches is probably your base, followed by concrete. I know that the standard usually was about a little less, and let me, Andy, you used to work for TechTop, come on up here.
Is it, is it a public hearing, by the way, too?
Well, let's, we're, we're trying to just get the best thing done.
Uh, the chairman of commissioners, Andy Gonzalez, of Killam Development, and I was hoping it's a public meeting, 'cause, uh, a public hearing, 'cause I wanted to...
Can I just ask, point of order, if, we, this is an item that has a public hearing, and so if you wish, you just open the public hearing, then you can hear comments.
Yeah, okay, then this is a public hearing, I will take public comments now.
Okay, uh, again, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Andy Gonzalez of Killam Development, and yes, I work with TechTop, but I don't think it's eleven, eleven inches of, of concrete. I'm, I'm gonna first give my, my, our opinion on, on this item. Um, we have some property that, that doesn't, that isn't paved, don't use as dead storage, uh, but going back and making this change to have it, uh, made into asphalt or concrete is gonna be tremendously expensive. I suggest some other, if it's a required, it's gonna be retroactive, which is, I think, not right, but if it has to be, I would suggest for dead storage, use some type of millings or, or even a, a cement-treated, lime-treated base with a asphalt, uh, prime coat on top, which is gonna kill the dust. I mean, there's other items out there, other products in the industry that allows for, for, that keeps the dust down. You don't necessarily have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on concrete or asphalt. So I, I mean, I would just implore the, the commission to consider that, uh, you know, to, to use other options, and it's extreme, you know, it's required to go retroactive on this.
Mr. Chairman, so for the engineer here, well, but the issue is that people claim it's dead storage and it's not, and that's why they're saying...
Sure.
Yeah, if it's, if it's legitimate dead storage, you're saying it's perfectly great.
Yeah.
No, but that's the issue, is that people abuse the designation, so they ruin it for the people who are legitimate, and then what do you do? You just have to make it all equal.
Sure.
You see, unless there's some certification process or inspections and they...
And, and, and the city has that ability, and so I'm, so why punish those for the few, I mean, if you're gonna do it, do it right, give the ability for those who use it as dead storage. I mean, we're one of the largest land ports or the largest land port. Some people do store legitimate items on, on, on property, just let them store it. I mean, it's, we have warehouses, we're hundred percent to capacity in our warehouses, and we have some tractor trailers that are being stored on some of the lots. And we have it, at, at that time, we were able to, to put caliche down, we were able to put an asphalt, uh, uh, prime coat on top, and it's, it's been lasting, you retouch it, but I mean, you're not spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to do that stuff. So I, I agree, I mean, if it's a legitimate concern, do it, but don't, don't just throw everybody into the fire just 'cause some people are doing it wrong, is what, you know, our...
No, no, I see that. Mr. Chairman, does, do they have the capacity to construct some type of, well, they obviously do, but is that unwieldy and, and, um, outside of, of the scope of work that they craft something like that, where there's certification and there's a inspection and...
If I may, I would, I would suggest that this discussion is another, something you could task building to do to say, hey, we need to look at the materials we're using for paving. But what we're looking at right now is, we had a requirement for it to be covered, but we just put too long a timeframe and people were using that as a loophole. So we're closing loophole on the timeframe. We're not saying, we're not changing because it was never allowed to, to have unpaved.
Right.
That was never allowed.
Right.
So if you want...
No, no, that, that storage was.
No.
Legitimate dead storage, I thought you said that it was thirty days or more.
Well, no, it was never allowed, the whole intent of this ordinance was to allow development because, you know, obviously paving five acres was very expensive.
Yes.
You know, so when you start looking at that, when it was crafted, the intent was, okay, we'll make you pave around your dock areas and everything like that. But for dead storage, or, or actually for parking, you will be allowed, you know, five years, as long as you do twenty percent a year. The problem is that the enforcement never really came in and people never complied with it. And I understand what you're trying to do now, you're saying, okay, well, you know, it was nineteen ninety's, a long time. You know, it's time now to really say, okay, guys, you guys have kinda skirted, you know, what should have been done, you know, for some time. But I think we need to look at, is the paving of the surface, what is a reasonable cost, okay? I mean, because to come in and try to do a business right now that's operating and say your cost now is gonna run you five hundred thousand to do a parking lot, that's a sizable hit, you know, immediately. So I think we need to probably discuss what are options that work, you know, mostly for dead storage as opposed to the in and out traffic. The in and out traffic, I would not recommend that we do anything other than, you know, regular parking. I don't think any owner would wanna do that either because it's, and most of them were, were going to concrete anyway, 'cause asphalt does not work here. With our high heat and the weight of those trailers, it was not working. It was a disaster. But I think we need to look at alternatives. Uh, let me just recognize Commissioner Dominguez before.
What I see is that we don't have any study, Mr. Chairman, that shows us how we're gonna impact the, the community. We have all these areas that, that they need to comply, and, uh, we have given them time, five years, maybe more. But are you, what, what are we gonna do? Now we're gonna come back to them and say, we need to do it in one year? The comment was very appropriate because, uh, it, it can cost twenty thousand, maybe half a million dollars. So does staff have a, a type of study, how we're gonna impact the community?
Exactly.
And you don't. And so you're, you're bringing something to us that you want to act, when, when you don't really have the backup information to say, well, you know, we're gonna impact the community, we're gonna hit them with, uh, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they, they're not gonna comply.
Yeah.
Why? Because they have not complied in five years, because the cost is, is outrageous. So now we're gonna force them instead of looking at an option, Mr. Chairman, where we can work with the community, as you were mentioning, that, that we, what is allowable, what is not allowable, what is dead storage and what is not dead storage, see? And we don't have that information right now. So I believe that acting on this or sending a recommendation to the council would be completely inappropriate at this time.
I, I think that there's more work that needs to be done, you know, with the industry and, and the, and the city, the building department. I am...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, we'll be willing to share, uh, some estimates and ranges as far as the cost of, of what it takes to dig everything out and put in a, a structure that, that can withhold what we're talking about. So we can share estimate ranges and, and, and some of that with, with the building department.
I, I think, I think that's a way to go ahead and go with this. And, I mean, I agree, we're the largest inland port and we do wanna do things, you know, one hundred percent correctly, but by the same token, we don't wanna lose business either, by, you know, adding a standard that...
If I, if I may...
Go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me for interrupting you. I, I wanna point out the fact that the current ordinance is already, anybody that's already been there, it, it's already expired, because it was only at the time of the drawing of the ordinance, they gave them five years. That, it's been over ten years that that's happened, nobody's complied. That's one. The other thing is, again, this was shared, your concerns, Commissioner Dominguez, was, was shared, was brought up to the city council. And city council directed staff to bring this item up. So it's not a, I don't want, I don't want to say that the building department hasn't, we're, we're just following the orders, and I know that's, it's kinda sounding like a, like a cop out. If you need information, we can get information, um, that's not gonna be an issue. that's not gonna be an issue, we're planning on, we, we still need to post it, we're planning on probably going to the January twenty-first city council meeting, so I needed to have it sixteen days before posted on, on the, on the agenda to move forward. I don't know if, if, if those comments, that's why I have it posted, I wanted to make sure that whatever this commission comments were, to try to maybe have other alternatives, uh, on the, on the actual how to do it, with as far as materials are concerned, we can provide, uh, something, if I, we need to come back to the planning zoning, we will, we're not trying to rush this and throw it down somebody's throat, uh, to, to, I, I know the industry may, may need some time to digest this or something, we're not trying to push it down, we're wanting to go.
I know what you're doing, you're following, you're following city council directive, and that's, that's.
We haven't.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get it, I get it, I just think that maybe we need to do a little bit more work to figure out what would be good paving standards that work for everybody.
Yes.
Uh, and, and that's all I'm saying, I'm not saying that we're not gonna do it, I'm just saying, let's see what, and maybe there isn't, I don't know, okay, but maybe there is, and I think we just need to explore that, and if we do need to tweak our, our paving standard for specifically commercial sites that, that are for trucking and stuff like that, then maybe we want to look at something like that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, presumably there's a difference in standards, I, I mean, presumably in an unloaded trailer and a loaded trailer, right?
Yes.
Well, okay, so then this would do, this would just, this would require everything to assume it's a loaded trailer?
No, 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 no.
But you're saying eleven inches of concrete, which of course we all disagree with that number, but, I mean, you're talking about like a hundred loaded trailers, you know?
Right, we're talking about, they're stacking them, uh, ver-, see, uh, more of a commercial parking lot is where you'll have internal, uh.
Movements.
Traffic, like, like fire lanes and stuff like that, the storage, you don't do that, you just pile them up.
Well, and I think part of this discussion, you know, it just comes to my mind, too, that maybe, and I realize this is also a, an impact on enforcement, but as part of your paving standards, which is probably the easiest way to go, to figure out, are there anything else that's there, you might want to consider that saying, hey, a certain percentage of this property can only be used for dead storage, with this, you know, kind of paving standard or a different paving standard, I mean, you know what I'm saying, uh, if, if, if you have one hundred percent, and you say, well, five percent, or two percent, or whatever that is, can be utilized for this, only using this, I'm just, you know, saying what works, we, we certainly want to make sure that all our businesses, you know, continue to work and, and employ people and stuff, but at the same time, we don't want to put an undue burden on them, we do want to comply with everything, so I'm just trying to figure out, how do we get to the end product where it works for everybody? And, and that's all I'm saying, and maybe what we need to do right now is probably table this item and send it back, uh, guys to maybe work a little bit with the industry, with your engineers, city engineers, and a lot of people that would be, you know, involved with this, and come up with something that would, you know, work for an individual business, I mean, because a big hit on it may just determine that company says, well, I'm moving to Eagle Pass, you know, and that's the last thing we'd want to do.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, what is the cost of, to meet that standard per acre? What is the cost, the standard, he's saying, not the, not the concrete, that, but, uh, it's gonna be concrete anyway, it's just be less concrete?
It, it, it depends, you know, anywhere from thirty to fifty dollars per square foot, uh, for, you know, for, for a proper pavement section, it, again, depends asphalt, concrete, what you have underneath, what your subsol.
You have an acre, what does that count to, an acre?
Oh.
Over two hundred thousand. Twenty to two hundred thousand dollars.
Over two hundred thousand?
Hundred twenty to two hundred thousand dollars an acre.
Two hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Roughly.
For ten acres, that's two million?
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I, I mean, you all, the city council will be hating on you all for all the calls they're gonna get, saying.
That's why I'm saying, that's why I'm saying, let's see if we can find, you know, something that, that works for everybody, 'cause the cost is, is, is very high, it's very high.
We have no issue with the table and bringing back costs and list of how many parking lots, and what kind of materials, and whatever.
Something that, you know, like I said, we don't want to put an undue burden on, on existing businesses, okay, so I need a motion to table?
I'm motioning that we, um, close public hearing, table eleven A.
I second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much for your presentation. Now we have the presentation of Rico de Laredo. We finally get to Kirby's presentation, after three meetings.
Yes, and I'd like to ask that we ta-, no, we shouldn't. I mean, I, I wish, I do wish the entire.
Board, commission.
Commission was here.
It's up to you.
And I also wish we had more time, 'cause this has been longer, but we keep running the risk of it being a long meeting.
Well, I have to, I, I, and I, and this is legitimate, and I apologize, but I'm, I suffered, there you had a dinner meeting with an out-of-town manager.
We don't have a choice, then we're gonna lose our quorum, and, but I just want to say that, don't be concerned, we, we have plenty of time, we're looking at a timeframe into next year, we're, we're very thorough on the process we're doing of taking input and looking at best practices from other communities, and also getting, taking the input we've received from the community and integrating that, and then that's gonna go before staff, and we're really gonna dissect this and look at it, and make sure it's gonna fit, and what are the implications, so this is not something that we're doing in, in a hurry, and we're going to be coming back to the commission multiple times, and the